This is the worst of the cameraman.
All right.
David.
Wait, wait, one minute. Assembly required here.
I know you're there.
There you are, camera. We can't start without some good mail. That's right. Ready?
Yeah, we already did the pledge just to...
Yeah, we already did it.
Okay, all right. We could love that.
To reenact that.
Yeah.
All right, so for the first item, we have Commissioner's Office's request to board approved and execute resolution fourteen dash one eight seven, itemizing financials through meeting of December thirtieth. Heidi?
These are just year-end financials. The supplemental appropriations for various funds, the revenue certification, and transfer year-end. And then we also have a cash transfer from the general fund for proportion of two thousand fourteen funds for the eight hundred communications from the incumbent fund, and also the remaining engineer's office addition project transfer of cash.
Okay. I would make a motion to accept this resolution.
Second.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Naveer?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Heidi.
Department of Aging.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As I said before, I'm trying to get all the contracts done before the first of the year. The first is with university hospitals. This past year, we had done a senior health outreach program with them, and what they do is they go to each of the senior centers at least one time a month, and they do education programs for the seniors as well as health screening, such as the bone density screening, stroke screening, lung function screening for the seniors. This year, what we're doing above and beyond is I ask them to bring resources as well. So if they have an issue with their bone density, what can they do to follow up with it? Or if they're having podiatry issues, where can they go for the right kind of shoes? So we're trying to take it to a resource level this year.
How is measurable how well that's received?
Yes, yes. What we did is we began tracking this last year. So about thirty percent of the seniors who attend the senior centers attend the UH health programs.
Okay. Thank you. Read on number two.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and execute the senior health outreach services agreement with University Hospitals Jogger Medical Center to provide senior residents programs of healthcare outreach and education at the five senior center locations on a monthly basis for broader county residents age sixty and over for the period January first, two thousand fifteen, through December thirty first, two thousand fifteen, in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Naveer?
Aye.
Motion approved.
The next is also with university hospitals. We have supported the senior adult assessment program. What that is, is when there's an issue going on with a senior, maybe an unexplained change or further to the senior assessment program, and it's a comprehensive assessment from physical therapy, occupational therapy, psychiatry, social services, and a physician, a one-stop shop. And what we do is the four hundred and sixty dollars, what that is, is a coordination fee. So that actually allows for all of the professionals to be onsite at the same time to conduct this assessment. So seniors don't have to schedule six different appointments with six different doctors on six different dates.
Can we do a read on that?
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and execute the contract agreement with University Hospitals Jogger Medical Center to provide senior assessments for Jogger County residents age sixteen over for the period January first, two thousand fifteen, through December thirty first, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of four hundred and sixty dollars per senior assessment, with the amount not to exceed eighty-five assessments.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Naveer?
Aye.
Motion approved.
The next is to execute the contract with Paige Food for our elderly nutrition program for next year.
Glad you found someone.
You too, and you did a taste panel, and the food was fine. It was fine, you know.
Maybe a little bit.
I'm a picky eater. I'm a bad one to ask, but...
Sounds like...
But, you know, apparently they loved the stuff cabbage, my staff, so...
Oh, well, yeah. That's always a winner.
The food was good, and they're very flexible, which is what I like. They work with us on delivery time.
Don't call me for delivery, no need to.
I don't think that's... Do you have a fan on you?
No.
Number four.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and execute a contract agreement with Paige Food Services Incorporated for the elderly nutrition program preparation and delivery of meals for the period January first, two thousand fifteen, through December thirty first, two thousand sixteen, in the amount of four dollars nineteen cents through four dollars forty-three cents per meal for group A, and five dollars fifty cents per meal for group B for the year two thousand fifteen, with an increase to two thousand sixteen based on two thousand fifteen prices, by the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers for food away from home. These meal groups include home-delivered and congregant meal programs, emergency shelf-stable box lunches, and renal and diabetic therapeutic food day and weekend meals.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Naveer?
Aye.
Motion approved.
And then lastly, our legal contract. We have been working with Shraft and King over this last year. Patricia Shraft, she is a, she's an elder law attorney. They have provided about five hundred and twenty-two hours of service up to the third quarter and seen over two hundred and forty seniors. They do the good deeds program, we're still doing signings for wills and whatnot. They do a little bit of small courts issues as well. What I do typically, you may hear that sometimes we have a waiting list to get in, and that is my decision because I put a cap on the max hours, because we could probably do legal seven days a week, eight hours a day. So I have received some calls about Shraft and King maybe not being a good provider because they're limited, and I just wanted to be clear that that's me. I set the amount of money we're going to spend for legal services.
We're only going to spend so much money, and that's it.
Right.
So how much do we spend total?
Let's see. Last year, I believe it was over ninety-two thousand. This year, up to the third quarter, we're about sixty-four, so we're going to come way under. And I think that's because the good deeds program, when it first kicked off, we had a lot of business regarding that, and that has kind of dwindled down quite a bit. So we're going to come way under this year.
Because let me ask you something. Would it, and we're talking just, we're talking hours here as far as a hundred and the amount of one oh six hundred.
I think a hundred.
So a hundred and twenty-five, beyond sixty-five and a hundred hours. I mean, would it be, as far as, would it, would we be able to possibly look at getting our own attorney, maybe even through the prosecutor's office, that we could have, that would be, that we could bring in as a, almost at a full-time level, that would be able to be on hand, that wouldn't be, you know, wouldn't be somebody that would have that kind of hourly rate, but we would be afforded, somebody that would be available, you know, pretty regularly for this type of situation?
I would say multiple attorneys come, sometimes two at a time. So they have at least five attorneys who come to the senior center. They are elder law attorneys. Not many attorneys have that certification at all.
I mean, what if we would put out like a job description specifically for them, maybe to actually have it as a position in-house of the senior center? I mean, would that, you know, under the Department of Aging, is that something that...
I've never looked into that. That's certainly something I could bring to the advisory board to discuss. I do know that Shraft and King, we've had two complaints this year. One was because the client did not get the issue that they wanted, and the second was the client did not like the lawyer's wardrobe. So as far as what they, as far as the service that they provide, there have been no issues with the service. And there also, the Western Reserve Area Agency on aging, they do the request for proposal, and they pick up twenty-four dollars and some odd cents for the first six hundred and fifty-five hours. So they are a federal provider, and they do the RFP.
So if you spent sixty-four thousand last year...
About ninety-some.
Ninety thousand. So to get a full-time lawyer, you'd probably pay him a lot more than ninety, because you're going to have to pay the PRS, you're going to have to pay healthcare, all those other background things.
But I guess I look at it as...
But if she comes in with five lawyers at a time, I don't know. Yeah, I understand what you're talking about.
Because I'm under the prosecutor's office. Let's say, for example, one of the assistant prosecutors would be working two thousand eighty hours a year for under ninety thousand, and right now.
Yeah, I mean, based on what they're paid, I think, you know, you're right.
Right. We would be able to get almost three times the amount of time.
But the time you add it on all the payroll taxes and all...
The question is, can you get somebody that specializes in elder law? But I think that's certainly worth looking at.
I'll get to it.
You know what I mean? And at that point, too, it's, I don't, I mean, they would also possibly, you know, relieve some of, like, a lot of this, you work through the prosecutor's office on a lot of these contracts now. So if that would be something that we could probably, possibly talk to the prosecutor about, is to say, if somebody would be assigned to that, we're already allocating these dollars.
Right.
If he would be able to have an additional person now, we would, we would be able to relieve a little bit of his workload with reviewing some of this, that he would also be able to be, be the, you know, attorney and legal counsel, too, for the Department of Aging directly on those issues. I'm just, I'm just trying to dig us out of the box as far as...
While we're...
Yeah, I understand.
I think you're actually right. Yeah, look at it.
Well, yeah.
Take into consideration the payroll taxes, because that does bump it up.
I think our agreement to look at it, it would be one thing, and then I think the next thing would be we want to sit down with the prosecutor and find out what, you know, it's like, well, did you think about this, or the downside, or whatever? But I don't, I don't think we should just dismiss the idea, but, but look into it, look into it further.
I would like a continuum of legal services because I have people calling, and already can have a four-month waiting list. I would prefer that we didn't table this. I would like to start scheduling business because the seniors have needs, but I think that we would certainly look at it.
Yeah, no, no, no. I don't think we need to delay this in a sense of...
But moving forward, I mean, as a yearly plan, you know, even for, even if it were twenty sixteen for the year, I think there's a lot to check into.
I don't see a minimum.
Yeah, I was going to say, this isn't not to exceed. This isn't a, we can change our mind in the middle of the stream.
Absolutely.
So, so I think, I think we're all in agreement that we move forward with, with this, but that we look into another option.
Because it would be nice, you know, for you to have somebody that, you know, I just look at the number of hours, you know, it's just, it's a...
Six hundred and fifty-five, yeah.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah, it's true. Two thousand eight is a lot more than six hundred and fifty-five.
Well, like I say, I just think that the next question we have has to come from Jim. The question we have, the answer has to come from Jim.
Because I don't know how much time he puts into some of the reviews of a lot of this, too, but let's say that, that attorney can handle, you know, say that he does half of his time as handling these type of issues, and then half of his time is spent handling the legal issues for aging. That frees him up, too, on, you know, potentially on some of the other stuff, and then you have somebody always available.
Yeah.
So if we could do a read then on number, numbers five.
The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve and execute the legal services agreement between the Jogger County Board Commissioners, the Jogger County Department on Aging, and Shraft and King Company LPA for legal services that include advice, counsel, and representation of clients for the period January first, two thousand fifteen, through December thirty first, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of a hundred dollars forty-two cents per hour for up to six hundred and fifty-five hours, and a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour, the amount that up to a maximum of seven hundred and seventy-five total hours.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Naveer?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Jessica. Have a happy new year.
You too.
Stay from here.
Yeah, stay home.
I do. I do, you're staying home. Let everyone else go after them.
Good morning, Anita.
Good morning. Who ordered the weather? I do. Thank you.
My friend.
Unless there's somebody out here.
All I wanted was a green Christmas, right through the year. That was my wish.
You have to mind this before you leave, how soon it is to Valentine's Day.
Oh, it's all over. I hope you hear, I'll be down.
It's the Maple Festival, I'm worried about.
My birthday, fourteen winters over.
I'm worried about what the date of the Maple Festival is.
Well, it's last week.
Doesn't matter, it'll be a blizzard.
Yeah, spring comes after that.
And the winter festival is always warm, so you know, that's the way it works there.
Or the dogs letting.
Yeah. There's no, there's no snow.
All right, so what do we hit up?
This is one of our old, back from two thousand, clients. We have a mortgage and a note. Since they're going to refi, we've asked them to pay off the remaining balance, which is about thirty-five hundred. So this is the satisfaction of the mortgage on the note.
Okay.
So we'll do six and seven together then? Okay.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute today's satisfaction of mortgage for Cole and Pruchus. The down payment assistance for property located at one fifty-five eighty-one Bellevue Drive, Newbury, under grant number B C zero three zero two six one, is a mortgage in the amount of ten thousand dollars, present as five. The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute today's satisfaction of mortgage for Cole and Pruchus, a rehabilitation-led remediation assistance for property located at one fifty-five eighty-one Bellevue Drive, Newbury, under grant number B C zero three zero two six two, as a mortgage in the amount of seven thousand five hundred and thirty dollars present as five.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Naveer?
Aye.
Motion stands approved.
Have a wonderful new year. Thank you.
Okay, the county home.
I don't think Karen's here. This is just someone who is still in the probationary period, I think, so.
Okay.
Probably decided to move on to another position.
All right. Can we do a read on Nate?
The county homes requesting the board accept the resignation of Jamie Burridge, part-time attendant number fifteen oh four dash one, to be effective December twenty-ninth, two thousand and fourteen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Naveer?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Morning, Chair.
Morning. Good morning, Chair. Good morning. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year, Ed.
Yeah.
Items number nine and ten are related. This is another step in grant process for the investigator, who handles the violence against women's investigation, typically domestic violence, but can include other crimes against women, violence. The amounts are specified, in the two, including a local match from our law enforcement trust, which is seizure money that we confiscate from those who do evil. Probably the best way to put it, yes. We've been doing this grant for a number of years, and this, she is the only dedicated, Robin Taylor, Deputy Taylor is the only dedicated investigator for crimes against women.
All right. So then if we can do a read on both of those.
The Sheriff's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services subgrant award agreement for the Staff Violence Against Women Act, BAWA, grant number two zero one four W F B A two eight two one four, for the period January first, two thousand fifteen, through December thirty first, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of sixty-six thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars fifty-seven cents, forty-nine thousand six hundred and ninety dollars ninety-three cents from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services, sixteen thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars sixty-four cents local match, with thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-four dollars thirty-nine cents from the County General Fund, and three thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars twenty-five cents from the Sheriff's Law Enforcement Trust Fund. The Sheriff's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services subgrant award agreement for the Staff Violence Against Women Act, BAWA, grant two zero one two W F B A two eight two one four B, for the period January first, two thousand fifteen, through March thirty-first, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of thirteen thousand six hundred and ninety dollars eighty-one cents, ten thousand two hundred and sixty-eight dollars eleven cents from the Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services, three thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars seventy cents local match, with two thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars fifty-one cents from the County General Fund, and nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and nineteen cents from the Sheriff's Law Enforcement Trust Fund.
All right, I'll make those motions.
Second.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Naveer?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you. I can know you're...
Yeah, have a quiet one. Let's hope.
Jerry, for water resources or...
Morning, Jerry.
This is our Russell Park wastewater treatment plant. We're working on the upgrades of putting the EQ tank in there. In the past, we've had some issues with some flooding down in that area, and we've had issues with the filter building and the filter flooding. When the river rises and then plug their blocks, the discharge pipe, the water then can't get out, so it backs up into the filter, into that filter building, and into our filter. And we had, about three years ago, it flooded so bad, it completely shot the whole electrical system, including the backwash pumps. We had a terrible time getting backwash pumps back up and running so the filter could be pulled back online. Since we were working on the EQ, since that time, we now have the metal tanks underneath that hold the, it's called the clear wells. The water, after it's been through the filter, sits in that clear well until it can be pumped out to the river or can be used as backwash water. There's been some holes that have occurred in that tank, and it's allowing groundwater in, which isn't, isn't that big of an issue, except for now we're having to pump out groundwater. So what we've decided to do is, we were planning at some point in the future to replace that filter building and those filters anyway. We've moved that process up to now be wanting to redo the filter building and the filters. We're going to use disc filters, which are above-ground filters, so they won't be, they won't be susceptible to flooding, as well as we're relocating the building, which will relocate the blowers and everything to a higher point within the property area. So it'll be outside, hopefully, well, it'll be outside the hundred-year flood plain, but, you know, after that, it's...
Sure, sure.
All bets are off going to deal anyway.
Sure.
So where would the building go down there?
When you come in right now, the drive goes down to the building. It'll basically be at the end of that building, back up in like the far left-hand corner.
Okay.
So that's the highest, that's the highest point of that parcel of land, so.
What kind of elevation difference is there?
It's at least, I think it's about two or three feet difference between where the, well, actually, from where the filter is, it's about five feet difference, because the filter, the current filter is actually down below, even below grade, so that, so we're going to be up even higher. It's above the hundred-year flood plain, according to all the flood maps.
Can that equipment be elevated by structure?
It will be elevated a little bit within the building, the...
I mean, the disc filters would have come up a few feet on that.
Yeah, the disc filters sit up on legs anyway, so everything, everything in that building is actually going to be up a little bit higher, because even the, even the blowers sit up on, up on pedestals, they're not right down on the floor.
I see.
So the contract to hire GPD, or to extend our contract with GPD, originally it was Forsight did the original, the original EQ tanks, they'd been bought by GPD, so now Bob Provost, who's the engineer, is working for GPD. So this is an expansion of the GPD contract to include that additional engineering work.
That is a local firm.
Well, Forsight.
Forsight.
Yeah.
Everybody's not...
He's actually, his offices, actually, the GPD offices are right down the street here, right next to the...
Doctor Mandell.
Right next to the Getgo Station. They have a little low-rise brick building.
Sounds good, sounds good. Okay, if we could read number eleven then?
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute the service contract maintenance form number one, increasing the contract with GPD Group for additional engineering for a new building, new filters, and lower relocation to a new building, by the Russell Park wastewater treatment plant upgrade, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Smithy?
Aye.
Mr. Naveer?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Good morning, Jerry. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning.
And it'll be designated as far as they, that's what their balance is, X number of dollars for, it's not like it's all in a pool of money, and they just can, each individual's predetermine what they get?
Technically, by law, it's all in one big pool, but it's my intent to be somewhat fair with it in that, based on population, but that, that's only a general guideline. I can, if someone comes over with a project that's best for the county as a whole, that services the county as a whole, and it's a great project, they're going to end up getting some good money out of the fund.
I see.
So, and that's really how the power advice code set it up.
So is that something that could be used for that Newcombe deal, or no?
Well, the money would have to do within the, within the village boundaries, so, what is it, Lake Street up in there. If they were going to do something in there, yes, that is actually one of the roads that could get money, but no, not outside the bounds of the villages, it can only go in the villages and the city.
Hmm. It's tough, because, you know, they're buying, they're buying tags in the townships, too, you know?
Can the, can the village decide to like, you know, use this for their project, and then they could also maybe give money to that other road? Couldn't they do that?
I don't know if the village
Couldn't the village do that, or is that
I don't know if they can get their funds outside or not, I don't think they could pass your
They can?
Different places.
That's a shame.
But there is stuff like for Newcombe Road, How Public Works is a, is a great avenue for that.
Yeah.
And they've already received, they've done all the drainage upgrades and stuff, major culverts and stuff, and tree clearing to prep for that project, over phases to for Newcombe Road, and that's all How Public Works money.
Okay. How Public Works.
And that's definitely, in my mind, a pretty high priority, and more than willing to go after funds to How Public Works for that. And they're definitely the least restricted. You just go with your own local standards, whatever you want, and you can build it that way, and they'll give you a loan. So it's, it's a great avenue to go.
And does the fund just continue to grow, or does it get to a point where they've got to use it or lose it?
You talking municipal road fund? It continues to grow, yeah. There, there's a substantial balance in there, right now, it's over $600,000, isn't it?
Right, so you don't
Yeah, we, we continue to encourage them to use it, I mean, that's why it's there. Use it, put it in the roads and structures and use it.
Who holds that $600,000 right now?
It's a fund that I have, I, I can't touch, except for
So it's on deposit with the treasurer's office?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
$100,000.
$100 million.
$100 million that we can't touch.
Yeah, in essence, that's, it's no different than where my road levy is, it's sitting in your funds, really.
It's there, but it's your
It's in there, but it's
It's your
Exactly.
Right, it's earmarked.
And this, the way it's released is, the municipality asks you, you guys then ask me, is this a proper use for it? I would say yes or no, and then you guys could release it, and then the auditor encompasses it and so forth.
Okay.
That's how it's always worked, but we've tried to clarify exactly how it can work in here, what roads it can be used on, there's maps, and then forms for them to fill out, so it's very clear. I know Chris Thiem's chased this around in circles before, so hopefully this will make your life easier.
And you've been working on this for a while, because you gave me an advanced copy of that.
Yeah, you've had it for quite some time, right, yeah. And we, we think it should help everybody out, just clarify how, it's kind of an odd thing in the law, why I'm even dealing with something we have no responsibilities within the municipalities, but yet these funds are under my discretion, so.
Yeah, they do that, too, in the ORC, they take care of it, you have no control.
Yeah, so it's real odd, so we just try to make it as straightforward and clear as we possibly can, within the bounds of the law. The prosecutor's office has reviewed this, and they're good with it.
Okay.
That's where that's at.
All right, so with that, if we could do a read on number 12, then?
The county engineer's office is requesting the Board approve and adopt a revision of the policy and guidance for the application and distribution of the Jaw County Municipal Motor Vehicle License Tags and execute the statement of policy.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Smede?
Aye.
Mr. O'Rear?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. And then we'll, we have a public hearing at 10:30 regarding the proposed dedication of the existing undedicated extension of Stillwater Drive, TR 152, in Russell Township.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the article on the paper.
Okay.
Any questions?
Second.
Mr. Smede?
Aye.
Mr. O'Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Spudler? Hi. Morning, how are you? Good to see you.
Hi.
How are you? Very good. We are from last week.
Okay.
For what we intended to do was the resolution proceed and order. As of today, as of yesterday, I spoke with Mr. Kling, he is the remaining signature, but we do not have an plat, so the plat is not ready at this time. It's not because he won't sign, it's just a bank procedure, and a
The bank?
Team that needs to come
It's still passing around.
Yeah, but everybody else involved has signed.
It's ready to roll.
So
And we expect it to happen, it's just a bank procedure.
So it's, instead of doing both today, we can at least do the resolution proceed. We have the report, the engineer's report, crap, and ready to go, we'd read that today, too.
Okay.
And then we'll have to move it down the road for, once the plat is in hand, with all signatures, to present to you.
And you've been in contact with the prosecutor's office, and it's good with, we continue to have the hearing here, there's no objections, we have the, if you guys will approve of this, then after the plat is signed, you guys are able to sign.
Did you know? We're going to have to go back out there after it starts snowing. We lucked out last week.
We lucked out.
Yeah, we lucked out going out there in that nice weather, I don't want to go there in the snow.
You remember the Whisner one, right, Mary?
Oh, yeah, that was fun.
Well, Mr. Riff, you want to start a tunnel project, is the only reason?
Well, okay, yeah.
Boy, that would be some tunnel.
Anyway, at this time, I can go ahead and read the engineer's report. The Off-City Jaw County Engineer Engineer's Report, pros dedication of an existing undedicated extension of Stillwater Drive Township Road 152, Russell Township, Tuesday, December 30th, 2014. Stillwater Drive, 60 feet wide, from the centerline of Pitts and Rose, Highway 87, which was existing T-type cul-de-sac terminus, a total of, total distance of 1,414.27 feet long, its existing centerline, was dedicated by plat known as Frank W. Stanton's Riverdale Estates, recorded in volume 3, page 21, of the Jaw County Record of Platte. There exists an undedicated extension of said Stillwater Drive Township Road 152, from its existing T-type cul-de-sac terminus, approximately 270 feet west of said cul-de-sac. Township has been maintaining this 270-foot, undedicated portion of Stillwater Drive for several years. Undedicated extension of Stillwater Drive is of similar age and construction as the existing, existing dedicated Stillwater Drive. On August 20th, 2014, the Russell Township Board of Trustees petitioned Jaw County Board of Commissioners to dedicate an existing undedicated extension of Stillwater Drive Township Road 152, from its existing T-type cul-de-sac terminus, approximately 270 feet west of said cul-de-sac. On dedication of the 270-foot, undedicated extension of Stillwater Drive Township Road 152, Highway Easement, 60 feet wide, with a 75-foot radius cul-de-sac, will be created over parcels 26018250, 26142700, 26213905, 26199700, 26199600, 26199500, and 2634, 034000. Those whose properties that share a common border with the dedicated Highway Easement are subject to any easements provided by statute, such as rights as other properties may have in the road, as necessary means of access to the property. Budding property owners are identified as follows. Permanent parcel number 26018250, Michael and Stacy Kling. Permanent parcel 26213905, Michael and Stacy Kling. Permanent parcel number 26213905, Roy and Eugene M. Potageal. Permanent parcel number 26199700, Alan and Karen S. Zack. Permanent parcel number 26199600, Alan and Karen S. Zack. Permanent parcel number 26199500, George L. Silva, Sylvia. George L. and Sylvia are build trustees. And permanent parcel number 26034000, Robert Edward and Donovan Rebacki trustees. All public utilities retain easement, easement rights within the dedicated right-of-way limits resulting from a road dedication per state law. All budding property owners were notified, and notice of hearing was published in accordance with our law. There were no concerns or objections based on the above facts, the Office of the County Engineer believes that the dedication requested would be for the public convenience of the citizen. Prepare by counsel, Mr. Cottrell.
Should we go on to the second, uh, the hearing?
Well, is there any, anybody have anything, is enough questions or comments, suggestions, to make the motion to close the public hearing?
Okay.
I can't add a little information.
Do you need to take a roll on you?
No. I received a letter from Montville Township along the same vein here yesterday. Montville Township Board of Trustees is requesting, in this meeting, that you attend a township meeting to discuss Woodhill Road. Recently, the Board was instructed to rescind the resolution that would vacate a portion of that road. The Board is requesting a meeting with you, so that we may discuss what the consequences would be if the road were put on non-maintained status. Please contact the Board member January 6th, 2015, at 7:30, we'd be convening a time for you.
A couple minutes?
Just kind of, my understanding is that's, the Board here, its action has been removed, they asked you not to take action on it, so because you guys were working, I just kind of bring it to your attention that I will be attending that meeting, and explain to them what non-maintained status is and so forth, and how that does, it doesn't affect property owners. So if you guys want.
This is at the Montville Town Hall on Tuesday, the 6th. At what time?
7:30.
7:30. Okay. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
We just have a resolution prepared for the first proceeding with the dedication for Stillwater, a community report, with that resolution.
I make a motion to the Board to put the resolution for Stillwater.
Second.
Mr. Smede?
Aye.
Mr. O'Rear?
Aye.
Motion approved.
A little bit of celebration here.
The holdup is this deal with the bank?
Correct.
And when that's done, is that going to come back to us for another, or is this?
It'll come back to you for your signatures.
Okay, but we've already agreed to, that's what that
Action.
That action was, okay, we just have to come back and sign them.
Correct.
They have, you have to bring us, come back and bring us a paper.
There will be one additional resolution
Correct.
To order. And then
Correct. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, your honor.
Okay, number 14 is, the Commissioner's Office has requested the Board approve and execute resolution number 14-188 honoring Jacob H. Hamblin for achieving Eagle Scout, the highest award of advancement bestowed upon a boy scout.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Smede?
Aye.
Mr. O'Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Spudler?
Aye, motion approved, is that
Is that
No.
No.
All right. All right. And for number 15, this is a resolution honoring Commissioner Mary Smede for dedication and commitment to the residents of Geogga County. Whereas Mary B. Boomer grew up in Maple Heights, following her marriage to Frank Smede, moved to Chardon, Ohio, before eventually moving to Monson Township, where they raised their three daughters. Whereas Mary Smede, while raising her family, began her work toward a degree at Kent State University during the 1980s, earning a bachelor's degree soon come loud, and where Mary Smede thereafter embarked on a business career, founding SOS Incorporated, successful computer consulting business, assisting many local businesses, as well as Fortune 500 companies with their technology needs. Mary Smede was encouraged in the early 1990s to run for political office, winning a seat as a Monson Township trustee, where she served for over nine years. Mary Smede, following her primary victory in 2004, county commissioners' race, was appointed to the seat of retiring Commissioner Bill Repke, subsequently winning the seat in 2004. Mary Smede has served with distinction as a Geogga County Commissioner for the past 10 years, helping to maintain and improve the financial position of the county through conservative fiscal management, and working with her fellow commissioners to pay down debt, including the retirement of debt from the safety center in the last, less than nine years after the facility opened. Now therefore be it resolved that the Geogga County Board of Commissioners wishes to honor and thank Mary Smede for her dedication and commitment to the residents of Geogga County during this, during the time she served as the Geogga County Commissioner. Be it further resolved that this resolution becomes part of the permanent record of the Board of County Commissioners of Geogga County, Ohio.
Aho.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a little speech to give, if I may, or would you like to do the next one first?
No, go ahead.
Okay, I have kind of a final goodbye. It has been almost 11 years since I took the oath of office as your Geogga County Commissioner. Today is my last meeting, and tomorrow will be my final day. During these years, I have served with seven men, starting with Neil Hofstadter, Billy Young, followed by Craig Albert, Tracy Jemison, Walter Claypool, Ralph Fendelary, and finally, Blake Rier. These years saw dramatic changes in the operation of Geogga County. Those changes included fiber optic connections from 470 Center Street to the Auditor's Office in Chardon, connected to the Sheriff's Office in Monson Township, while duplicating all of our data servers for fail-safe disaster recovery. Additionally, all computer workstations were updated during this period. We also built a new safety center, promising the Geogga County people that we would pay off this $14.7 million center in less than 10 years. We accomplished this and much more. During the first eight years, the commissioners worked together as a team to make the work environment a supportive one. We kept everyone working during the lean years of the 2008 financial crash, and managed to keep health insurance premiums low, and covered all of our employees with the maximum life insurance by ORC law in order to protect them. Working with our unions, we managed to work out successful contracts, and in some cases, several unions disbanded. The commissioners' financial initiative to support the Fair Board, the Historical Society, and tourism, has helped these organizations grow, which has put Geogga on the national level for the best organizations in their class. Working with Nowaka, our county engineer, Bob Phillips, and now Joe Cottell, with the county commissioners, have managed to pull in over $30 million that went to the paving and reconstruction of our roads and bridges. To date, after driving with ODOT through the five county areas in October of 2014, I'm happy to report that Geogga indeed has the best maintained roads. ODOT agreed. These successes come about through constant cooperation in the region. Additionally, the Planning Commission, under the direction of David Dietrich, has successfully built a mitigation bank, has worked to help all our townships with their land use plans, and ultimately protected the zoning of every township through the expertise of the commission. And we cannot forget to mention the fine work done by our Building Department, under the direction of Mike Mahalson, and the excellent work done by our Water Resources Department for many years, under the direction of Gus Cycley and now Doug Bowen. And of course, Director Anita Stocker has been so instrumental in bringing about community and economic development in Geogga. It is important to mention the work done by the Soil and Water Conservation District, under the direction of Carmela Shale, upholding the federal mandated Clean Water Act and the Phase II Stormwater Regulations, in conjunction with the Engineers Department. It goes beyond saying how well our Department of Aging, with Sally Bell and now Jessica Bolt, has helped the seniors of Geogga County, working also with our finely tuned Transit Department, under the direction of Mike Casper. There are many others in Geogga who have done a great job that I would like to thank, including former auditor Tracy Jemison, and now Frank Leah, Jim Adams, the mental health director, Don Rice, our medicine bomb director, Chris Hitchcock, the treasurer, health director Bob Weisek, sheriff Dan McClellan, EMS director Dale Wedge, dog warden Matt Granino, JFS director Tim Taylor, and now Craig Swenson, prosecutor Jim Lees, and former, our other former prosecutor who is now, what can I remember?
Congressman, U.S. Congressman.
U.S. Congressman, David Joyce. It gets tough when you start
That's all right.
Prosecutor Jim Flay, public defender Bob Umhols, coroner Bob Coleman, recorder Sharon Gingrich, clerk of court Denise Kaminsky, county home director Karen DeCola, and certainly all of our elected judges, Judge Fury, Judge Burke, Judge DePica, Judge Bundell, and of course, the late Judge Chip Henry. But we can't forget Patty Footloft with the Airport Authority, who has done so much to further our airport. Finally, I cannot thank enough those who have worked directly with me in the Commissioner's office, which includes the former George Davis, who was the maintenance director, but now Glenn Vernick, a great guy, Christie Blair, Kathy Hofstadler, Heidi Delaney, Colleen Lockhart, Linda Berhany, Katie Schaub, Debbie Ashburn, Claudine Krasenko, Sherri Davis, Diane Arp, and of course, our prosecutor Laura LaChapelle. But most of all, a great big thanks goes to David Lair, our county administrator, who shoulders all the slings and arrows of the Commissioner's policy. David, you've done an exemplary job for us, and wherever I go, I will always remember you. Ultimately, a huge thanks to my husband Frank, and my family for being there for me throughout my term. This is tough. Geogga County is the jewel of Ohio, and we should all be proud. In fact, while you have all heard this many times, please let me repeat it again. Forbes magazine rated Geogga County as the fourth best place in the nation to raise a family. And Geogga County has been rated the healthiest in the state of Ohio. These are not small things. In closing, I believe the poet William Wordsworth wrote, "In remembering the past," really said it best, and I'm going to take a little literary license here. Though nothing can bring back the hour of splendor in the grass, of glory in the flower, I will grieve not, but rather find strength in what I have left behind. As I leave, I thank all those I have mentioned in making my time as Commissioner successful. It is not one person that makes the county work, but the cooperation of many. And finally, thank you, Geogga County, for the honor you have bestowed on me. Thank you.
Congratulations. Yeah. Yep. All right. Well, we wish you the best of luck, health, and the start of a new begin- Well, we wish you the best of luck, health, and the start of a new beginning, so.
Yeah, when door closes, another opens.
Absolutely, congratulations, and we wish you the best, for sure. Okay, so with that, we've got number 16 is, the commissioner's office is requesting the board authorize the county administrator the authority to execute in the case of a lack of a quorum of commissioners and/or obsession is canceled on a regular financial date, or on a day when financials need to be approved, the required approvals for county financials on behalf of the board during the year 2015 is authorized by the Ohio revise code 35.3, and which duties shall be performed under the direction and supervision of the commissioner.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Ms. Smede?
Aye.
Ms. O'Vier?
Aye.
Ms. Spudler?
Aye, motion approved.
And lastly, here for the acknowledgements, we have the weekly report filed by the county dog warden. A bulldog seized, impounded, redeemed, or destroyed for the weekend in December 17th, 2014, as required by our revise code 955.12. Our meeting schedules are gonna be as follows. On January the 1st, the county offices will be closed for the New Year's holiday, and then the regular scheduled commissioners' meeting is canceled. On the 6th, we'll hold the regular meeting, regular session. On the 8th, commissioners will hold the regular session, and then on the 12th, the commissioners will hold the annual organizational meeting at 10 o'clock. That's gonna be a Monday on the 12th. So commissioners, to meet you with that, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right.
Thank you all for coming.